Good heavens, Father. We thank you for this day in the city in which we live. Guide us this afternoon as we make our decisions. Christ's name.
Amen.
Okay, this is the regular meeting of the Noonan City Council, August 12th, 2021. The minutes that are before you need to be amended at the council will allow Ford to indicate that the resolution that we adopted in our last meeting regarding Noonan Utilities' purchase of solar energy through the MEAC program was at the 10 megawatt level. So if there's a motion to-
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion to adopt the minutes with that amendment to the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
Those like a sign? Thank you. Another housekeeping item today. We need to amend the agenda that's before us to include the debris pickup ordinance that Mr. Phillips-
Resolution.
Resolution pushed out to us. His explanation coming shortly. Is there a motion-
Make that motion, James.
Second.
Motion second to amend the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like a sign? Motion carried. And then one more housekeeping thing we're getting into the agenda. I would like to introduce today Heather Daniel. If you'll- thank you. Ms. Daniel is the new president and CEO of Explore Noonan Coweta, our destination marketing organization. She has been on board less than a month, I think, right of a month?
Right of a month.
Right of a month. She comes to us from an extensive background in marketing and convention of visitors' bureaus. Her education was from the Georgia College of Millidgeville and a bachelor in arts. And she is starting this organization from the ground up, literally. And that means that pretty much the only thing she had when she started was a bank account, which helped, and a website. But other than that, she is out of the community, meeting people. All of you know and remember of course that Explore Noonan Coweta is a DMO that is funded by our hotel motel tax law of the county. So she is an employee of that board. And we are so glad you're here. We're excited about what you're going to do with our community. And well, thank you. Okay, so we're into boards and commissions. The first appointment today for a three-year commission, we'll put that on our next agenda, please.
Yes, sir.
Then the next one is Mr. Shell, Keatington Beautiful.
Yes, I want to reappoint James Matthew Bryan.
Second.
Motion second. We reappoint James Matthew Bryan to Keatington Beautiful. Any discussion? All those in favor, we can get the aye. Opposed, like a sign. Mr. Jones, the next is a Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yes, I'd like to appoint Chris Lovell.
Second.
All right, motion is second. We appoint Chris Lovell to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like a sign. Mr. Shell, what about you, the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Sally Hensley to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
Okay, motion second. We reappoint Sally Hensley to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like a sign? Motion carried. The next is mine. Excuse me, this is the Coweta County Board of Health. I'd like to reappoint Gloria Barnes.
Second.
Motion is second. We reappoint Gloria Barnes to the Coweta County Board of Health. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like a sign? Motion carried. Thank you. The next, Mr. Alexander.
Next meeting, please. Put on the next agenda, please.
All right. The next, I will put on the next agenda, if you don't mind. And Mr. Crick.
Mr. Mayoral, on the next agenda as well.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Shell.
I'd like to reappoint the District Councilman Ray DeBose to the Downtown Development.
Second.
Good, thank you. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. We reappoint Ray DeBose to Downtown Development Authority. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like a sign? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda today. This is a request from the former Street Cemetery Commission to host a public information gathering, meeting at the Wadsworth on the 26th of August. Mr. Kraver is city liaison with the former Street Cemetery Commission. Is there any questions to him regarding? Yes, I don't think there's a member here today.
One question. That's at the same time that we're having a community education forum for the tornado recovery. And the subject matter on that one is going to be SBA, SBA loans. So I didn't know if you all had noticed that. I know that there's probably-
The group did not talk to that. They may or may not have noticed it, but nobody voiced that.
Okay, all right. Just a concern, because I know a lot in my area where we might be needing help on hearing the information from their representatives, so.
Yeah, I agree with that, Councilman Allen. Maybe they need to get that new information and be aware that there may be a conflict there that people need to be in both places and cannot be.
They're asking if you'd like to not approve the request for the date and ask and go back to them. They need again, as they stay here, on the first Monday of each month. I'll take it back to them as the liaison and say that they're not approved at this date and-
We'll reconsider because-
Understand they don't mean to go after this date, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I think, again, he's asking for reconsideration of the date because of the conflict, not because of the idea. Like, I think if I wanted the idea that they have an meeting, or we wouldn't be saying-
Sure.
-politics schedule.
Sure.
Yeah.
But a lot of my district, and also the Massentia district, there was a lot of disruption there that I know they could use help. And both meetings are important, so I'm just asking to ask them to reconsider.
No, if that's by all means, don't do so.
All right, so that consensus.
And the last, if they do it a Thursday, the last, the second of September is the last meeting for this tornado recovery seminars, so.
Okay. All right. I don't necessarily need a motion. I think you have, you know, direction from council.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. The former Street Cemetery Commission putting this item on the agenda, and because of other things that have happened in the community lately regarding the former Street Cemetery, I thought it was important for us to put together a timeline to share with council and the public. Mr. Kraver, if you'll pull that up on the screen. This won't take but a minute to walk through. I'm not going to explain every bullet point. But I do think it's important, if you go to page one. And there's one thing that I have put up above, February 99, is that 1961 was the day in which the city acquired that entire tract of land from CJ Smith Park on the corner, all the way up to the end of the cemetery, from Noonan Cotton Mills, which is now, of course, the mayor's law apartments. But I think it's important for the council to see these days, to understand kind of what went on. A lot of folks weren't on council when all, I guess most everybody wasn't on council, except for me, when all this happened. And then Cynthia came on and was part of all this. But February 99, the city was in the process of constructing a walking path to the cemetery property, and that was halted. I want to name someone. Bobby Olstead was the gentleman who grew up in that area, worked at the Noonan Cotton Mill, his family did. He understood what was there on this piece of ground that is this cemetery, and he understood the importance of it. And I can safely say that without Bobby Olstead's input and desire to see something done with the former Street Cemetery, this wouldn't have happened. I mean, I can safely say that. June 1999, the city hired RS Webb and Associates to perform delineation services to estimate the size and grave count. We have still, obviously still have that study. Anyone in the city who would like to see that, I'm going to ask that the city post all this stuff on our website, so it's readily available, the facts are readily available about the timeline, about the former Street Cemetery. Before 1961, we don't have a history on cotton mill, umbed it, and however they used it, I'm not quite certain. If you'll continue. Then you step through February 2000, we adopted an ordinance for the protection and preservation of the cemetery and established for the first time the former Street Cemetery Commission. March of 2000, the city council voted to enter into contract to move a shotgun house that was on East Broad Street to the cemetery. And that's what you see there now, if you go over to the site, as the African American museum. The shotgun house is moved. And I will also have to name a person here, Don McCarty, who was our ex-building official, took that project on as not only a city project, but as a very personal project. And he would spend a lot of his time, not only during his time as part of the city, but on personal time, to go over there and make sure that that house was renovated properly.
You can name the names. You got two more.
Okay. When you step in, is it the point in time to step in? Is it, this is the right point in time?
Yes, it is. It is the right point in time.
Go ahead.
Yes, Cynthia Roser and Edeli Helby-
Right, absolutely.
Are the two. One was the head of the African American Alliance at that time, and one was head of the Noonan Coweta Historical Society at that time. And they both were the ones who approached the city about having that house moved.
Oh, go ahead. Sure. Yeah, great point. Yeah, they're in, they are named in all of these documents that I'm going to ask to be put online for somebody to be able to peruse. May of 2000, the city had boundary survey completed for the cemetery property by Christopher Brothers Surveyors. Most of you know them. July of 2000, the city applied for and was turned down for a state historic preservation grant for the site. March 2001, the city hired another consultant company, Southern Research, to conduct genealogical and archival research and records associated with the cemetery. July 2001, the city received all of that information back from Southern Research. This is also another report that we have that's going to be placed on the website. 2000, July 2002, bid for repairs of the shotgun house in the city council agenda awarded to Coweta Homes. 2003, the African American Alliance requests to lease the shotgun house from the museum. And May of 2003, the final approval for the African American Alliance lease at the 92 former street was made. July of 2003, you've got to understand, when we stood up, the first former Street Cemetery Commission, it had a census. It had a set of instructions from this county to do what they did. And by July 2003, they had a final report and issued that final report to the city. Recommendations included that the maintenance be performed by the city of Noonan Beautification Department, and it still is today. The existing shotgun house be used for educational purposes, establish formal lane entrance and boundary markers, establish sample grave marker grouping, and mark location of the Charlie Birch headstone, and establish the location of the original cemetery entrance. Some of those things have not been done, but I'm confident that the new former Street Cemetery will pursue that, pursue all these goals and others, and continue to work on that. May, June of 2006, African American Alliance request to move the slave cabins, storied mecanic property at 87 Lagrange Street to the museum. The former Street Council, the former, on former Street Council approved it pending approval of liability insurance on half of the American, African American Alliance. Cabin was never relocated because that liability approval, that proof of liability insurance was never provided. August 2006, the city hired RS Webb and Associates to sample seven possible graves on the eastern edge of the cemetery, included six, and they concluded that six and seven were human grave shafts but clear of the concrete sidewalk. I'll call out another name here. At that point in time, Cynthia Jenkins was on even council, and we were, the city was constructing, which is there now, a sidewalk along former street. She called one day and had us halt construction to make sure that there were no graves being disturbed, and that was the reason for hiring RS Webb and Associates back in 2006. March 2012, African American Alliance lease was being altered, renewed every year unless either party gives notice. April 2012, lease, new lease agreement with African American Alliance was approved on the council. 2017, 2019, the lease was approved, was renewed. 2019, in September, Dr. Jeffrey Glover with Georgia State University was approved for a GPR work, ground penetration resolution work there at the site. And then COVID hit last year, and his assistant, or his student, who is doing this work as her thesis, has still not completed that work. Jeffrey, Dr. Glover, I had a good conversation with him last night. He's actually related to my wife. And he tells me that he is expecting that work to be finished by the end of September, so we'll have that in hand. And in February of 2021, the current reestablishment of the former Street Cemetery, the meetings are ongoing. And African American Alliance in March of 2021 asked to review their organizational structure before renewing the lease. And again, September of 2021 is the expected completion date of the work for Dr. Glover and Georgia State graduate students is expected. Dr. Glover also gave us the name of an individual who can be of assistance to us and the former Street Cemetery Commission with regard to ongoing and a new, higher level of work to be done over there to determine grave sites and other things about the site that I'm, I'm not an archaeologist, so I can't say exactly what it was. But Mr. Phillips and I had an opportunity this morning to have a phone call with Dan Bigman, who is the doctor ramping, who has a resume, a great resume with regard to doing this type of work. And he, I'll let Mr. Phillips speak to that conversation, if he doesn't mind doing that for just a second.
Yeah, when Dr. Bigman, his firm specializes in, as Mayor said, can recommend it from Dr. Glover. It is the identification of the potential burial sites. Obviously, we did that in 99. It's been 20, 22, 23 years, I guess 30 years since we've done that. Obviously, we all know technology's changed in 22 years. We also, while we appreciate Dr. Glover, his graduate students, you know, obviously the work, it's been there, graduate students, they're learning. They weren't identifying everything on the site. So I think there is an opportunity for the former Street Cemetery Commission not to consider a search such as Dr. Bigman provides to delineate where those locations are with newer technologies. Did speak with Dr. Bigman, as the mayor said today. He said they'll use combination of technologies, GPS, GPR, all kinds of different things, that kind of flew over my head a little bit as to how he was performing operations. He said it is an exercise that would identify, what he would say, a potential presence of burial sites. Obviously, he said that he would assist us through the educational process, or assist the former Street Cemetery Commission, I should say, through the process, helping to educate the public as to what the process is, and what the process is not. Then, he said there would be other, up to the former Street Cemetery Commission probably to engage other consultants that would help them in the direction as it relates to how to preserve, how to maintain, how to promote, exactly what to do. His firm is actually, the archaeological firm actually would identify similar to what RS Webb did 20, 22 years ago. At that particular time, they were actually using a probing technology, basically of a probe line. So that was my takeaway.
Yes.
They also had ground penetrating radar at that point, and that's where they could lose. But I don't know if they did that, or if, because I remember Ellen Irvin being involved in that, the ground penetrating radar. And I can't remember, because it's been so long, who actually was the one that did that, which gave us that map that we all have seen, or not all of us, but some of us have seen, that shows the 249 graves within that area.
And that map was actually the actual probing exercise, and that was developed by that RS Webb in 1999 contract.
So what we did on the phone call this morning was ask Al Bigman to present us with a proposal through Mr. Phillips that he could in turn get to Mr. Kraver and present to the former Street Cemetery Commission for their consideration to come back to us to approve the funding for that particular service. And we look forward to hearing from him in the next two, three days, I think. I mean, he wanted to send me something I could put in front of you today, and I said, we don't, no, we're not going, we can't do that. But we do want to move on this, and I take this very seriously. For some reason, folks in the community don't think that we did, but we did. And I want to make sure that we're on record saying that, and that, you know, that we move forward with help of the former Street Cemetery Commission in any way we can to preserve and protect cemetery that's on former street. So there's no action needed today.
I just want to add something to that, though. The community is not just making it up, though. I mean, we did have construction materials on the site, something we would not have done at Oak Hill or somewhere else. So I mean, just, I mean, I don't want it to seem like it was just some arbitrary, hey, we're just mad because we don't know what's going on, because that wasn't what set people off.
And I understand that. There are also, were no phone calls made to anyone at the city, including myself, to say, would you please rectify this problem? So, and I don't want to continue the conversation, but I mean, that's the way it's handled, it was inappropriate. So the next item on the agenda today is a report from the Cultural Arts Commission. Jamie Rutledge, Ms. Rutledge has that presentation today.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me, giving me the opportunity to speak. And I am Jamie Rutledge. Thank you, Hasko, for running through those slides. I am the 2021 Cultural Arts Commission Chair, and I'm thankful to serve the city in this capacity and have your support. So I'm just going to give you some updates on what we have been doing recently. The Cultural Arts Commission was created, just a little history, I think all of you were present on the commission at that time, but created in May 2016 by a city ordinance for planning cultural events within the city of Noonan. One of the things that sparked this was the Sister City Celebration in 2006, where the Ayrshire Fiddle Orchestra was coming to Noonan to celebrate the sister city relationship. And so thus, an ordinance was made after the success of that celebration of community volunteers to create a cultural arts commission. So since that time, the purpose, you'll go back one side, sorry, Hasko. The purpose in that ordinance was to establish a commission for the purpose of planning, sponsoring, and coordinating appropriate cultural events within the city of Noonan. In 2020, we, as a commission, got together and made a mission statement that we felt followed into this, to engage, enhance, and excite the community through cultural arts events. So you can go to the next slide, thank you. We are a 14-member, completely volunteer commission. Right now, we have one vacancy that's only been vacant for a few weeks. And we have our officers, other than myself and Lakeisha Strickland, and Mac Strickland is our vice chair, Tracy Brooks, who is here today as our treasurer, Brenda Jessel is our secretary, and in charge of our social media is Maggie Hickman. And you can see, we have many longstanding members on this commission, too, who are here with me today, Phyllis Graham and Betty Hickman, thank you. And so thank you for supporting us with those people. We can go to the next slide. In 2021, we have had a robust year of activities despite being separated. We had a virtual program started in January that we called it Art Recharges Our Town. And each month, the second Saturday, we aired on Facebook at 10:00 a.m. each Saturday, multiple, or I'm sorry, various events. So we started with a great film produced here in Noonan by a Noonan-based film company called Artists Are Welcome Here. And you may have seen that in the past, that it had been long in the archives, so we took that out. And it's a great piece about how Noonan welcomes artists and cultural events. We went down, we had spotlights on singers, artists. We will have one on a local author, and spotlights on our musicians for our jazz. We also, in February, celebrated Black History Month with a local documentary film called The Power of Place, which all of those are available, if you haven't been to the Cultural Arts Commission Facebook page, they're still available for you to go and see. So you can hopefully do that. Next page, please. All right. In 2021, we also had in-person events. We had our summer music series. We had Jazz in the Park. Four of those events are happening this summer. We've had two already. Our next one will be Friday, August 20th, and our final one will be September 11th. This is Saturday. And we have also been able to forge a wonderful partnership within sponsorship with CTCI, Cancer Treatment Center of America, to come behind us and help with that event, and make it more robust, and bring in their patients and honoring citizens that way. And thank you, Councilwoman Jenkins, for assisting one of some of our commission members in establishing that relationship. We have two events that will come and spotlight Southern Arc Dance Theater Company, which is a professional arm of a local dance studio here. They will present Dracula, which has original choreography and original music. And we will also have the Nutcracker in December, so those holiday offerings. So we have done quite a bit in 2021 with some limited resources and limited people coming out to events. We have also had some administrative strides, which I think are important to mention. These are just some of the pictures from some of the events and outreach. We've been doing a lot more outreach this year, and presence on social media, which will bring visitors from our community, our residents, and outside the community to some of the events that happen that we put on, but also our businesses and other events that are here in the community. We revised and adopt, and you all helped us adopt new bylaws. We created standing rules for our meetings for efficiency and hopefully more effectiveness in those meetings, and you helped us adopt those as well. We also brought back a standard process for artists and for our commission members to present events that we would like to do, which- to present events that we would like to do, which delineate their objectives, the goals, also the, uh, the finance and budgeting that they would like to utilize, so that we can be effectively putting events forth and being just really responsible with the support that we get. So you can go to the next page, please. In twenty-twenty-two, we have a proposed calendar of returning events and a few new events. We are going to bring, hopefully bring back the Sister City Burns Weekend Celebration. That would be the beginning of February, a few weeks after the birthday of Robert Burns, and also in coordination with some sisters, past Sister City celebrations. We, um, hope to have back the Friends of Wadsworth Concert, which is celebrating the legacy of Charles Wadsworth and his chamber music prowess around the world, but have musicians here in Nunnan for that. Overtones is a mixed media event, um, put on and produced by Southern Arc Dance Theater Company, as well as is Arts in the Park, so we would sponsor them with that. Arts in the Park is a full day in Greenbow Park of music, art, dance, performance, visual art, that is open for free to the city. Jazz in the Park, we would like to have back for a four-series set, June through September. And also, we would like to have Nunnan Shakespeare, it's a Shakespeare company, produce a play for us. They are looking into perhaps bringing us Hamlet, and they do a wonderful connection with the school district to bring an educational piece to that as well, so study guides and things for teachers to use as people hopefully come up to that event. Um, we would have Dracula again, we would have new choreography and new score by local artists and choreographers. Our, one brand-new event would be in November to kind of kick off our holiday season, and that is Orchestra Noir. It is an all African-American chamber music orchestra out of Atlanta, and, um, the maestro and his wife live and produce their music in Atlanta, so we are hoping to have that as well. And then finish out our twenty-twenty-two season with the holiday Nutcracker. So, looking around at all these events, we have a full docket that we hope that you will support, and with your presence, and also, um, financially and with your time. We have looked around and we don't see any other group replicating these types of events that we are doing as a whole. And, um, we see that community members, we have seen quite a few residents from surrounding cities in Georgia attend these in-person events that we've had this year, so we hope with more presence in social media and marketing that we will be able to bring more people to downtown to appreciate the arts and culture that you have all supported for years. So, thank you very much for your time, and I would be happy to answer any questions that any of you have.
I have, um, a comment and a question.
Yes.
Well, thank you, Ms. Jamie, for all that you do, and your, uh, commission does. I particularly appreciate that. Since I wasn't around in two thousand sixteen, and this appoint, this vacancy is mine to fill, uh, my question to you is, what type of, um, person would, uh, would you like to see, and how can I help in my search to find that person?
I appreciate that question. Uh, so yes, in two thousand, I wasn't around in two thousand six in Nunnan either. Um, so I feel the person that we need on the commission now would be someone who has, wants to do social media, and wants to help us with the marketing and planning and organization of outreach. We all, we have a lot of wonderful creative ideas and marketing tactics, but I do feel like that person could be, usually, that's a younger person, I'm sorry to say that, but even younger than me, because I'm not big on social media, but I feel like we do need that capacity on our, on our team right now. Thank you for the question.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Got a question on the, uh, and I thank you also for what you do. I know it's not a easy job, and you should, thank us, but it's great, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
The summer concert.
Yes, yes.
Do y'all do a variety of different music? Citizens have asked me, will they do different music in this society? I don't know, I'll have to ask, we're going to hear from them. So, what variety of music do y'all offer, or will you offer?
Yes, this year, we did, with our partnership or sponsorship from Cancer Treatment Center of America, since Jazz in the Park was the tried and true piece that, um, that the Cultural Arts Commission has done since two thousand sixteen, and had won a city award and brought people out, they asked that we continue and expand from two to four with jazz. Um, we did vote as a commission at our last meeting last week to continue with four jazz concerts, um, and so, but that could possibly be adjusted in the future if citizens would like that, but one of the things, we discussed that with CTC, if they continue to partner with us on that event, but also listen to what residents would like to hear. I do want to point out as well that the Main Street Nunnan does Nunnan Nights, which is three Thursdays through the summer, June through August, and they always offer a different, um, type of music as well. So we want to make sure that we're not repeating, and that we're giving people, um, options, but that's a good question, and we will continue to consider that.
We do, because when you say you'll make changes, you know, when, when my citizens come in and ask for different music, we're depending on you, I understand cancer treatments, if you're contributing, you know, it seems like they're driving what they want, but this is something for the citizens, okay? And we've created and downed down to attract everybody in the, in the, uh, community, not just a certain group, or a certain age group. So, so I ask as councilmember, consider the concept of music that citizens have asked me to ask.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Jamie, uh, my question is about the Wadsworth Concert.
Yes, yes.
And, uh, I know you have met recently to, uh, to see how that can be, uh, be energized, where it meets maybe the needs of the whole community and just not one, uh, age group. And you're, you're going to do that, I assume?
We, yes, we did, um, have a meeting last week talking about refreshing the Wadsworth. Currently, the plan is to refresh our outreach, because we have been reaching the patrons who have been patrons of the Wadsworth Concert for the last decade. So one of our big pushes is to have a market act shift, particularly in that, and, um, artistry shifts, you know, in turn, we will maintain the legacy and integrity that Charles Wadsworth built on, which was chamber music, but, um, we can, we're looking at artists, and we do have an artistic director for that, that, that we can discuss artistry change as well. Do you have thoughts on that, refreshment at all?
No, I think that's, I mean, I just, I, I feel a council, uh, here, that you all working on.
I do have one more, last comment, I guess, is thank you all very much. I have attended the Burns, which there's nothing like here in Happy Birthday on Dag Pies, um, which they did for me when I was there. Um, I have attended the Friends of Wadsworth Concert, was involved in your whole series in the, um, early part of the year and the later part of last year. Um, I attend every Jazz in the Park, it's actually my favorite event to attend, um, and I've been there for, um, quite a few of your other programs that you do. And I just want to thank you all for the hard work that you put into this, and that I encourage councilmembers to come out to all of these events, so that you can see what they are doing there in our community. It is really a great program, and well-attended, in fact, Jazz in the Park is one of the most attended, well-attended events that they do all year long. And I think that Office Twenty, is your name, is that correct?
Correct.
And, uh, I love for council to come out and see what's going on out there, and to see, um, what great program they're bringing to our community.
Thank you.
Let me finish this up, I think, by saying thank you, uh, for everything you do, thank you Phyllis and Betty, during the audience, the years of support you have given to the Nunnan Cultural Arts Commission. This group not only plans all of these things, they are hands-on, hands-on, it's not like, you know, somebody else shows up and does all this stuff. They work hard, not only planning it, but executing it. We appreciate that very much.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Okay, next item on the agenda, our city manager today has one, I believe.
I do, I want to call Mr. Kramer to introduce, um, this talent addition to the team.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Phillips. Um, I'm going to add, I'm going to add, as many of you should recall, when we started our conversation about the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA funds coming into city of Nunnan, this body authorized the creation of an ARPA special project manager, so funded that, and gave us the overhead to allow for us to hire the individual, this individual is now standing for my life. He has dropped a memorandum in front of each one of you, now, you know, letting him introduce himself, and then there's a little bit of information he'd like to get out of you, not just today, but over time, and hopefully, uh, you'll learn to enjoy Andrew as much as you can be happy.
Thank you, Asco. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I appreciate the opportunity to speak briefly before you today, and I appreciate the opportunity to help you administer these matters. I'm a recent graduate of the University of West Georgia, and will again, graduate again, graduate December with my master's degree, so before you, what you'll find in the memorandum that briefly describes what the ARPA funds can be used for, and we have attached a survey, as well as your survey results from the previous one, you can take it. What I've done is I've combined all of those into main categories, or bucket categories, as I refer to in the memorandum, and what I'm asking you to do is please place a percentage into the blank section on the, uh, survey paper, uh, and those will be used to determine what percentages of each tranche we place into the ARPA and how we spend it. It should be fairly detailed, like a memorandum, a memorandum, this is all we need, and you can get it back to me, whatever way it does convenient to you, whether that's scanning it, emailing it to me, sending me a picture of it, or dropping it off with the city, I appreciate it either way.
Okay. Any questions? First, welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being, appreciate you.
I do have a question, um, just to make sure that I am understanding this correctly, there are four buckets, based on the four colors that you have put on there, and so these colors.
Yes, absolutely.
With one of these buckets, one of these buckets.
Absolutely. So, so I've actually combined, I believe, small business and nonprofit aid together. Nonprofits should show up on your previous council results, as I believe, and I believe small business may show up as yellowish, I'm sure. Um, but yes, those have actually been combined into one specific category, so we can make more room for revenue recovery, infrastructure, and as well as, and as well as.
Okay. And I do have one more question, we may not be able to answer this yet, but I've asked, uh, our city manager about this, is, um, and I'm hoping that, I hope I hope the results will, will dictate that we can, there is the ability to do housing in the interim, is that correct?
Uh, there is, there is an extent, um, they don't have, they don't have clarification on how we can provide, provide direct services to that, but what we, one thing we have discussed is potentially doing that through nonprofit aid. So one of the ways, we'll just reach out to nonprofits in the community within the city of Nunnan, in the vice office here, to go ahead and see if we can administer that anyway.
Good, I asked that, I asked one of the groups that's coming up soon, um, we are, we are really hoping really that someone's going to really, that we, that our community and our community for housing, for help out of some of this, uh, give to the council's pleasure, but of course, it's acceptable, it's acceptable.
And as you are the steward of this fund, it's important that I have your approval and your feedback on how we can do this. I will administer it based off of what you give me, of what you give me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sure, we'll have some, sure, we'll have some, you've given us some, you've given us some.
All right.
All right. All right, uh, I don't have anything this afternoon, uh, new business, uh, this is public hearing, I love hearing, here's at this time, this is an application, alcohol beverage license, this is thirty-three and a half East Ross Street, the reasons for this are coming to us today is to issue of distilled spirits, uh, is everything in order, is there someone here today that would like to, you're representing, is there anyone here today that would like to speak to the issue of this alcohol license at thirty-three and a half East Ross Street? Seen no one come forward, I'm close, but I'm hearing this time, and time for motion.
Motion.
Motion is second, we approved the application, is presented, any discussion?
A quick question, uh, on the second page, point number seven, has the affidavit been affidavit as required? Okay, okay, just making sure, just making sure.
All right, do the motion second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Motion, carry, thank you, carry. The next item on the agenda is consideration to purchase a heavy-duty rescue, rescue unit using the Houston-Goweston area council. Chief, how are you doing?
I'm doing well, how are you? Everybody's well? Um, here seeking approval for a heavy-duty rescue unit purchased by the HGAC, which we purchased our last three apparatuses with, uh, this truck is, uh, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, and, uh, um, that's not, that is also, that is also the equipment on, so this will be at the station one, where we run, we run the majority of our rescue cars out of, and then we will use the current truck there to replace an aging unit at station two. So any questions? So any questions?
Is there a motion? I have one question, how many years service you have got?
Um, um, at least ten years, ten, ten or fifteen years, if we try to get out, we'll probably get out.
I'll make that motion, I'll make that. Motion is second, to approve, is there any, any discussion, any discussion? All those in favor are indicating by saying aye. Motion, carry, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is consideration, we agree with Cowan County, County Community Foundation, this, I believe, is what Mr. Jenkins was referring to earlier, as we move forward, then Phil, you have this today?
Absolutely, I'd be, absolutely, I'd be, uh, this is a, a three-party agreement, it's only in the city, and then, uh, Quinn County, uh, where the commissioner's, and she, uh, Quinn Community Foundation, uh, I know that all of you had a chance, uh, I think a couple of weeks ago, to, to meet with, with the president and, and Amy Kelly, we're bridging the gap, explaining, uh, what efforts have been going into the long-term recovery planning, uh, and the discussion around the, the recruitment, their current recruit, as a long-term recovery director, uh, I know the, uh, mayor and myself had a meeting, and we were very impressed, and, uh, presented the idea, the idea of the city and the county's going together, and, uh, each contributing fifty thousand dollars, or total of a hundred thousand dollars, aimed for a three-year period, enough to recover the cost of, of tying the long-term recovery director, so they can focus on that effort, and that, and the wonderful ladies can actually, is their normal, they, they try, they kind of, and all for the last moment, except that particular, uh, resolution is in front of you, uh, just so you are aware, at this point in time, you are the party boss, you are to take the first action on this, with the annual commissioner having it on the agenda, and I'm certain the, the foundation of the party will be acting, before they can act as direct, as aggressive. So in front of you, consideration, the questions move.
Second. Motion is second, we are, the resolution is presented, any discussion, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Thank you. Under unfinished business today, this is second final reading, the order is commencing three, dash twenty-five, consumption and sales on public property in section three, dash six, seven, Grauers, chapter three, alcohol beverages, all the covered, this is the second final reading, a lot of the motion, so move, second, motion is second, we adopt our second final reading, any discussion?
I have a question, I think, might be a potential correction, on section two, paragraph C, um, the first line down, it says, as provided in this temporary ordinance, this is making this permanent, correct, and I just want to make sure we're reading this in this project, as an attorney, to make sure that this is, uh, appropriate, it is a permanent order, it's not a temporary order, it's, I just had seen this last minute, so, last minute, so.
Looking at what Mr. Shears has here, the version he has, actually, shout out, correct, you're directed W, it should not say temporary ordinance, temp, here, that's honestly temporary.
Okay, I got sidetracked.
I, I, I don't, I don't, well, it was changed, I don't know, I didn't look, it was in the agenda, and, and we just went through several revisions, before we got finally, we got finally, finally, and then I.
Okay, okay, go just correct it, go just correct it.
All right, I do have a motion, second motion, any other discussion, question, question, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. The next item is also the second final reading, the order is in section five, dash three, scope A, two B, building of Mark, one orchestration, adoption enforcement, chapter five, buildings, the order is the second final reading, is there any?
Second.
Second, we adopt the second final reading, any discussion, any discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Thank you. This is a, next item. This is a, next item is a consideration of order to regulate the sale of the state's spirits, and this is the item that we had in our session last week, and, you guys get it, and for us.
Yes, I do want to bring attention, I said earlier, as Mr. Shears just says, we're going through all these current ordinance revisions, I have seven different revisions of this on my computer, and I accidentally sent the wrong one this day to put into your change of package, so I do apologize about that. The actual original one that you all went through, I'll ask council meetings, and not the one that I got direction, at the work session, resolution. I did get that up here today, it reflects the changes that we discussed in the work session, because it wasn't in this package, you know what you want to, the need to continue to the next meeting, feel free to do so, at time, so, I apologize for that, air on mob behavior, putting the correct ordinance right in there, but it does, does change the, the four seventy thousand dollars that's discussed, it does remove the CHV and C unit, the district as we discussed, it gives clarity on the multiple family members having interest, it's just, I think it's cover page in the agenda item, and I covered the change up, where I changed, I'll get all the parts in there, I'll leave that, I'll leave that.
Pleasure, council, pleasure.
I would like to see it, I would like to see it, on the next agenda, just give us time to read it, because I'm just quickly perusing through this, I'm seeing in section three dash six nine, I thought we, during our session, said we're going to use the census data, and Carey still has the, Atlanta has the issue.
Okay, yeah, we did have that discussion, but if you read that, in its entirety, it says in determining the population, the city shall use the most recent population that is published, called it ARC, and the absence, the absence, I think it is best after I review that, I believe it as written, because we only get census data that continues.
I think that was the point, I think that was the point.
Yes.
The second one.
In this point, we were getting, when we're getting census asking, it's the most frequently on my own, if you want to only reconsider this, and that continues, then you certainly you will want to strike out, that ARC, and it rather be in this something you need to consider.
My understanding was, and it was the census.
Only the census.
That wasn't my understanding, my understanding is, it was opposite of that, if it, in my opinion, I don't see any reason to delay it, and also, with, we're having more free, an opportunity to review the numbers, as we grow, that, I mean, as we open up there, so, I would make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we start, and adopt, as, as, what you have at your desk.
Right, correct, right, correct.
Well, we do have another question. We don't have any printing, we don't have any recording, so this is going to be a hardship for you.
Well, even if this passes, it's not, so, that's not, so, because it's like a council, it's like a council.
Any other comment?
Well, and I brought this up during the workshop, I would like to, I would like to, again, we've kind of talked about this, about the churches, the schools, and the residential areas, being the same, you can marry it up, but there were specifically allowing churches and residential areas to be less, so.
There was no census from the council, I got a change. City consensus mail.
I have one question.
Well, what, what, what is, every, every consensus, they always, on the, the six, six hundred, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the other ones are, are, correct?
Correct. No.
They're all state, they're all state.
Oh, the church is three hundred, and then three hundred, residential is ours.
Everything you see, put it under D, everything under D, with the exception of one, which is yours, and, and, is it four, all right, those two are up to you, is whether you want to set any debt, all right, two, three, two and three, and plus, and plus, where's the, how's the authority? Oh, yeah, it's in, oh, yeah, it's in, all right, those are set, those are set, as minimum, as minimum.
Because I just don't see the, why are we, why are we, for schools, six hundred feet, six hundred, again, again, for, if it's residential, it's residential, I think everything's six hundred, everything's six hundred feet.
To me, it shows the buffer, what six hundred feet is, it's already squeezed, high, where you could, in a commercial zone, where you could, and, and, you know, we don't want to open this wide open, because we don't have three any half, you know, I think we're going to have a hard time finding and buying and putting them in, so either kind of buy building, or build a, I don't want to make a service stretch, if nobody can buy with oldness.
And that's what, that's what, reduces that, affects that.
I understand that, but still, that's still, that's a buffer, bigger buffer. Is there a motion?
No, no, I'm, I'm, this motion, forward to adopt. So, we're trying to get consensus on number two, changing the three hundred to six hundred. Your suggestion, correct? Correct, okay. Is there consensus on making that change?
I'd say no, I'd say no.
So, we still have a motion, to adopt, as presented, as presented.
I have one more question, the census, ARC, is that an estimate?
It's a very accurate, very accurate, my knowledge, my knowledge, I mean, they have, they, as they calculate, everything, and I think they screw them up, every census, but they don't, they're far apart.
How often do they do?
Annually, annually, typically.
Any other question? Okay, motion is second, we're ready, I'll call a question, any other comments, any other questions? I'll call a question, all those in favor, if I say aye.
Aye.
If you place that on our next, second final reading. The next item on the agenda is a, eighteen Berry Avenue.
Doing well, very well, mayor, council, there are two properties that were in, that were in, that have been brought before you, that have not been resolved, and they, once things shut down last year, have not been able to get those back before you, back in fairness, both have been on Berry Avenue, first property, eighteen, Berry Avenue was sold, in March of last year, in SKA Realty, Mr. Kirin, Arthur, they have pulled, all their appropriate permits, and submitted plans to our plan to view, and those have been approved, and I spoke with Mr. Arthur last week, and we said, and we said, the issue is, the issue is having a hard time finding, crew, getting crew, getting a crew, schedule, they're on those projects, so he's hoping to get started in the next couple of weeks, but he's asking for a hundred eighty day extension to be able to finish the project, and I thought I would bring that before you.
He presented you with a timeline, a timeline?
He presented his schedule, and he hopes in two weeks, presented his schedule, and he thought he could get it done in six months.
Not being able to find, work out, just a week, or something like that.
It is, it is, a lot of people are having, a lot of people are having difficulty with that, something with that.
Okay, is there a motion? Is there a motion? So moved, so moved. Motion is second, we're in second, west one hundred, eighteen Berry, any discussion? All those in favor, if I say aye.
Yes, so this was brought for council, February, right, February, right shutdown last year, Mr. Calderon, he did make some repairs, some property, back, back, in the next set of pictures, but he, he repaired some of the siding on the back, and, and, according to what he told me, he's having difficulty with his other properties, getting rent, payments due, some more toring, so forth, so he's been impacted financially, according to what he tells me, pretty significantly, he doesn't have, he doesn't have the funds right now to continue that project, so he's asking, he's asking to have some of that cleared up, in late fall, and he's hoping to start, at least start on the exterior, at that time, that the house is secure, it looks sound, structural, really not compromised, he's asking for, again, a hundred eighty day extension, to give him more time, get his finances in order, and project.
Questions, any questions?
How's the grass, how are we around, you have papers, have the papers?
Yeah, and I, it's gotten high again, but it's getting, I will, I will get him, I will get him, I don't think that's an issue with him, he's generally responding, but I will, I will follow up with that.
Motion, motion.
Moves for a hundred eighty days.
Yes, sir.
So moved, so moved.
Second, second, motion is second, I understand the question, how to program it, and timeline, and schedule, he's got.
Yes, 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 and that, and that, and, again, he's, again.
He has built on doing, that's why he's asking, that's why he's asking, so.
Yes.
So, I really expect he's not being happy during the ninety day.
Right, right.
Okay.
Um, he's telling me, he's telling me that he is, that he is, that.
There's a schedule, there's a, right, right.
So, yeah, so, yeah. And I was a favor of, of, means, of, all about this property, and, at least, the grass cut, and, 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 there, there, I mean, I get it, that he doesn't have, he doesn't access it right now, to right now, stuff, but he's got it, at least, got it, and some maintenance, so.
So would Mr. Gu, so would Mr. Gu, and his motion, a hundred eighty days, a hundred eighty, on keeping, on property, the property, maintain, the grass, the grass.
Well, I'm willing to do that, I do have that question, can we stipulate some timeline for, to, at least a schedule for acquiring, for financing, I mean, I mean, sixty to ninety days, hundred days, usually, as good timeframe as to, you know, if you can get, if you financing, I don't, I don't want to get into, a hundred eighty days, and go, you know what, we can't, you know what, we can't finance, I'm on the yard, but, you know, it's, that would be, that would be my question, so.
And that's, I talked to him, and the issue is, the, I think the eviction, more toring is still on, things, so, things, he's having, he's having, he's not able to collect, he has a number, so that's impact.
Well, well.
That's what, that's what I'm relying, that's what I'm relying to you.
Sure, sure, sure. I would be willing to amend it, based on more contingency on financing, on financing, because, because, in that, in that, I don't know, what's the reasonable expectation right now on financing, on a bank loan, on a mortgage, particularly if he has, has a rental property, bills, collateral, it's not like, not without, not without.
Yes.
I don't know, I don't know.
Show, show the time, show, make you on, make you on, back quicker.
I would, I would adjust that.
Motion is second, I need any, twenty-one Berry, any further discussion, but, all those in favor, if I say aye. We don't have anything, we don't have anything, we can have a brief, a brief session, thank you, thank you. Oh, yes, we have, and, and, at the briefing.
Yes, yes, give it well, give it well, Mr. Shears, Mr. Shears, my resolution, my resolution. I'm going, I'm going. Okay, good, good. What you have in front of you now is a resolution, the Angela lady, Angela lady, or, you know, brief, I know we have, I know we have this item, we have locations, we made some decisions, and, basically, we have given, no, given, no, I don't pass, we go to the doctor by July the second, and then we were going back, and we were going back, so we were considered standard operation, if a contractor put it out, put it out, contractor had to remove it, had to put it out, put it out, we would pick it up, we would pick it up, standard operation, maybe bigger, we've been getting a lot of questions, a lot of, just now you can, now you can, pretty out, you pick it out, and the houses, and the, got mine, also getting, also getting, more importantly, more important, also from various, some parties, now that are, that are, that are, that are, that are, that are, actually issuing grants, or grants, or removal, and cleaning up, and cleaning up, and they're saying, my grant, when I hold up, hold up, hold up, homeowner, homeowner, if you allow that contract, that contract, to the curb, as opposed to a cost that we're going to have to cover, and actually be, actually taking, opposing us, opposing us, of what I have in front of you, is an ordinance, that will allow us to go, to go, to, to, to put out, to put out, vegetated, vegetation, reduction, the bridge, storm related, storm related, power, and, and, until June, if it is put out, it's put out, not related, somebody's not saying, it's not a, it's not a, that's formulated, that's formulated, that's, that's, that's maybe hard to formulate, right, yeah, yeah, about difference, that, 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 that we know, it's, we know, it's, 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 it's formulated, I'll, I'll, I'll answer questions.
Second, second, questions, questions, common question, all those in favor, if I say aye.
Thank you, Carey. Anyone else to come here, on a, on a, on a, on a, if you'll, if you'll, if you'll be, if you'll state your name, write your name, please.
Good afternoon, Phyllis Graham, and I'm just here, I'm just, I'm so excited, I'm so excited about courts, I know, I know, it's just a happy thing, after, after we were discussing, so, thank you, I was there the other day, the other day, it's looking great, it's looking great, I think it's, I think it's the twenty-eighth, twenty-eighth, gonna be a little celebration, so, great, y'all send come out, y'all treat them out, thank you so much, thank you so much.
I appreciate that, appreciate that. Yeah, we've got, yeah, siding parks, dividing, they get, they get, they follow, they follow, and pick a field, pick a field, anybody in council, anybody who's not, not, pick a field, they follow, they follow, like, 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 really, really.
About the, about part, over there, when is it going to open?
Pick a field, pick a field. They're working, they're working, they're, okay. Anything else, anything else, one else, one more, I'm going to call, I'm going to call, they're putting a shell, for, for, for.
I'm moving now, next, next, allows by OCGA, CGA, S fourteen dash four, in connection with, to advise the city attorney, city attorney of discussing, rolling, skating, rolling, we can open session, on the resolution, our, our, our mayor, anxiety, our society, on that, they did not, they, for those, CGA, CGA, fourteen dash four, this body right of my, my, so, taking, calling, session, and closing, and, 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 we didn't accept, we didn't admit it, I didn't permit it, by the, and legal, and legal.
Second, 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 any discussion? All those in favor, if I say aye. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.